There were.
Right?
For this time.
I actually finished up this.
This last hour.
Gradually every day. With the. A phone would be. That one was.
It is nice. Jumping current.
Oh, yeah, every, you know, from buying things to seeing, you know, Googling. Questions. I've so much.
What are your other times?
Uh, yes. I have to try to do this in one year four. Five year four. Uh, written. You know, all those kinds of things like.
Crystal.
Exactly.
No, my kids don't even.
That's true.
Right. Well, I think too, how do we ever? Yeah.
I remember going.
That's true.
When you just drink.
All right, let's call this meeting to order. Hankins.
Here.
Power stocks.
Here.
Vogel.
Here.
Triplet, here. Olfest.
Here.
Pregnance, here. Sires. I can't hear you, Doug, if you're muted. Well, he's here, sort of. Awesome. All right. Him and sort of here. I'll look for a, to, a motion to the agenda.
I make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Right, um, now is the time for public comment for anything that is not on the agenda. Anyone here to address it today? All right. Then we will move on to approval of the P and Z Commission meeting minutes for December nineteenth. For motion?
I make a motion.
The motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same's mine. All right. On. Move on to item number six, City Hall Community Center project. Um, A and B. Turn this over to me.
Okay. Um, P and Z Commission, for your consideration, discussion tonight, um, is staff's recommenda- or recommendation that council, um, initiate the rezoning of the property owned by the city located from two fourteen South Third Street and three oh two West Van Dorn Street, C one to U one. Um, as, as a little bit of a background, the U one district is where most of the City of Polk City's owned buildings reside. Um, it was a zoning district specifically meant for city-owned property, um, and this would continue that cons- or consistency throughout town. And then, um, also for your consideration is the site plan for the proposed City Hall and Community Center. Um, the site plan preparer has addressed all major comments with a handful of label-type comments for me.
Is there any discussion?
Uh, regarding the rezoning and the site plan, uh, should we be talking about those now? Or just talking about the rezoning now?
Um, I think however you guys want to handle it typically when you're talking about one item with two courses of action, you try to talk about it together and then separately.
Do you have any additional comments on the site plan?
Um, from staff's perspective, we feel very good about the location of the City Hall and Community Center. We feel good about, um, we worked with the, 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 uh, site plan preparer to get an adequate amount of parking stalls where we feel comfortable, um, particularly because of the concern of parking on the square. We want to make sure that was addressed, we don't make the problem worse. Um, and so I think by adding fifty stalls for the use of the building, um, it would be very helpful for the square.
Uh, just a couple of comments, uh, mostly related to the site plan. Uh, first of all, uh, would like to, uh, thank this, uh, staff for including a bike rack on the design. I appreciate that. Uh, also, uh, the, uh, overstory trees are sped- spread throughout the property or not located in just one location. I appreciate that effort. Uh, we did not really see anything relating to the inside of the building, and so I'm just, uh, curious, uh, where the public restrooms are going to be located that would serve the city square. And, and, and when I say located, how would that be access to the building?
And that is something that is good to mention, I appreciate. Those, so the way that the building is laid out is the restrooms would be on this corner, and they will be accessible from the outside.
Okay, I see two doors there. That is what those are.
Yeah, they are independent of the rest of the space. Um, they are permanently available for the public using the square, um, and there is an ADA compliant route from the square to those.
Okay, and it looks like the bike rack is in close proximity to that.
Correct. Yes, the idea is to kind of give yourself the opportunity to create a sort of trailhead type, or a, a trail stop, I guess would be a better way of putting it, um, where bikers can get off their bikes, use the restroom, get lunch at the square, that kind of thing.
And, and since you brought that up, I was gonna a- also ask about that. Uh, you would, uh, in the write-up, it talks about some different options that might have the ability to be bid on or happen if, if it be, uh, I, I assume that they come back if, if the budget allows. Uh, could you talk a little bit more about that trailhead section and where it would be, or, or, or I, I believe it was called an additional plaza or something like that?
Yeah, so that would be in this corner as well, basically just off where the existing sidewalk sits today. There'd be a large lowered platform that would function as that plaza, and then as part of another bid alternate, um, we would add the, an additional five foot of pavement to make the trail across that block. Um, ultimately, the city has plans of making the trail all the way south in the coming years, um, but that would give us the opportunity to take care of one block during this project.
And then the parking too is on, is north.
Well, uh, southwest, so not this corner, the opposite corner.
Yeah, I had, I had to end up writing. What direction everything was.
Probably doesn't obtain, but I was just curious, is it a LEED certified building? Do you know?
No.
Okay, I mean, you've got a lot of the infrastructure that it would take to be LEED, but I guess it didn't apply to these. Just a question.
Yeah.
I see the logic of changing the zoning. And I didn't really have any questions on the building per se.
Well, I just want to go on record saying, uh, you know, I know that we have limited commercial space in our city, and we continually eat into our commercial space by whether it's a developer wanting to do more houses, or the city wanting to put a new building on commercial. It's counterintuitive to increasing our tax rules for non-residents. Be nice to keep commercial. Um, so that to me, I'm, I'm struggling with. Um, I get that, you know, the comp plan wanted to keep this down here. Is that the best? I don't know, could we reevaluate? Is there other things that we could think of creatively? Perhaps? Um, but yeah, I'm really struggling building a new new building right next door to the current one. I do appreciate your comments about the topography of that lot, and that would be a challenge to put any type of commercial space on it, so I appreciate that. Um, yeah, for me, I have a, that's, that's my issue with rezoning of it. Um. Anyone else? Anyone in the audience? All right.
Uh, very open for a motion at this time. Uh, I'll make a motion that we recommend the council approval of rezoning of property by the city at two fourteen South Third Street and three oh two West Van Dorn Street from C one Central Business District to a U one Utility District, uh, subject to, uh, engineer and staff, and staff comments, uh, dated February eighteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Olfest?
Yes.
Pregnance?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hankins?
Yes.
Power stocks?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Triplet?
No.
Eight. Does that take care of everything then for A and B? No, just A, just A?
A.
Okay. Any further conversation on the site plan?
Uh, I'll, uh, make a motion that we recommend the council approval of the, uh, site plan for the, uh, for the Polk City New City Hall Community Center, subject to engineer and staff comments, uh, dated February eighteen, two thousand twenty-three.
Second. Power stocks? Yes. Vogel?
Yes.
Triplet?
Yes.
Olfest?
Yes.
Pregnance?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Hankins?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, let's move on to item number seven, disutated, proposed amendments to zoning.
This is more of a discussion item. Uh, there's really none, I mean, there are, there are a few actions that you can take tonight, um, but this is, as we were digging through some of the zoning information about the City Hall, we started lookin', updating the zoning map for the new year, um, we started noticing some inconsistencies, some oddities within the, uh, the zoning map as the current zoning, as well as some things that happened in the last year that kind of lead us to question how we want to proceed moving. Um, the first one being is, is we were looking through the zoning districts, we have a district that is completely unused in the City of Polk City, which is the current GF District, and then we have a U District that is called Public Utility, which I think the original intent was utility-based buildings would be there, but now we're using it almost as a catch-all. And it's, um, so I guess we wanted to have a discussion with the commission about, do you, your guys' feeling on eliminating the GF District as it stands today, converting all U one zoning and re- or taking the current U one district, renaming it to the GF one District, calling it a Government Facilities District, um, and then cleaning up some of the city-owned property that is not currently U one GF one, and converting it to those zones.
Just add something really quick. Um, this is just a discussion item. Um, the council can initiate a rezoning, but I thought it would be good for the Planning and Zoning Commission to kind of review this and make sure that you were all okay with the council initiating the rezoning. This is really kind of a cleanup matter, but we have quite a few of these areas in town that need to be addressed.
Just regarding like substations and, I know we have a, a small, uh, pumping station for natural gas up by the school, uh, uh, how are those zoned currently?
They're zoned, and this is typical, they're zoned with the adjacent zoning because they're not separate parcels. It becomes really, really difficult enforcement and record-keeping for you to zone just those small portions.
Okay, and they, maybe need a buffer or whatever.
Correct.
Right, I, yeah, I could never really see on a map how that was zoned.
Yeah, so like the lift station down there by the new Quick Star, that's part of the same commercial zoning district that the Quick Star is, and that's pretty typical in other maintenance facilities.
On the current GF, is that a federal zoning, or is there any, I guess my question, is there gonna be any problem integrating city with federal?
So there is nothing in the GF District as it stands today. The GF District was created when Polk City annexed the backwaters of Barrier Dam because the Army Corps of Engineers was worried about Polk City enacting some sort of restriction on the A one district that stands as today. The City of Polk City doesn't actually have the jurisdiction to do that. Um, we can't enforce zoning requirements on the federal land, so the GF District was almost created as a safety net that then was never used because I think somebody at the court realized that Polk City could not restrict those.
Where's it, where's the GF District on? Is it on here?
There, so there is none.
Okay.
There is none, yeah. It, it would be that the big, this big U one, which actually, that should be one, um, but this big U one here in the middle, that was the area that it was intended.
Do you want to talk about the other items that are in?
Yes. Yeah, I, I guess you should throw something, I mean, yeah, I, I don't care what it's called, but it does make sense to have one.
Okay.
I don't have strong feelings on.
Do you have a preference? Do you, do you like government? Government Facility District?
Uh. You know, it, so, and so, I mean, are we, do we have the elementary school in, in that, is that? Uh.
Yes.
So the elementary?
Yeah, that's.
So on, I mean, I know that we do have on the map U one, but maybe it does make more sense to use the Government Facility District. I mean, it's the same process to go clean up for one or the other.
So technically, if you were to take your U one district as it sits today and turn it to a GF one district, not a GF, GF one district, you are simply renaming the zoning, so you would not have to rezone those properties.
Okay.
However, if you are going from the U one to the GF as it stands today, that is a zoning, you would then have to go through that whole process.
And then, uh, our two schools are in different zonings as well? Just happened to notice that.
Yes. So the West Elementary is a U one, and then the, uh, Big Creek Elementary is in the, I think it's a, it's an R one. The schools are, I mean, they're a pretty wide use, why you're zoning districts. Um, and I think if push came to shove, we would recommend having them not be in the U one district, because technically not the city. So I think if moving forward, we would approach schools how we approach the Great Elementary.
So we could, we could proceed with rezoning or changing the U one and then naming it? Okay.
Yes.
Maybe that's the easiest to do.
Yeah. Um, the next item, just kind of as a, uh, something that we noticed in the cleanup in the Van Dorn area.
Right, I'm just, I could interrupt. The folks that are here, are, are you in the, some of the properties we're going to be talking about?
Yeah.
And, and would have some comments at some point in time?
So the next one is a bait, there's a U-shaped U one district wrapping around, um, the existing Lake Park Apartments off of West Van Dorn Street. Um, it is our understanding that when these lots, or when the apartments were platted, uh, the U one zoning was intended to provide a buffer between the residential and the higher use, uh, multifamily. Um, if the entire property were to be rezoned, to take the U one district out and then turn it to an R three, um, that would require a type A, which is a semi-opaque buffer twenty foot wide. Um, our thoughts on it is the city would not want to initiate that rezoning because the U one as it sits today actually provides a larger buffer space, um, for the residential from that higher residential, or that higher density residential use, uh, but we kind of wanted to get your thoughts on that.
I, I don't like imposing a new obligation on a landowner for something that they weren't obligated to do at the time it was initially zoned, or built, yeah.
And so that's kind of our thought would be that if this property I'm going to redevelop, or if the property owner were to request a rezoning, we would clean it up at that point, but not have the city initiate cleanup of that district.
And so now it could potentially be changed to a GF District?
Yes, it would be.
Process, and, yeah, that's just, it, it, it ends up looking even more awkward.
Yes. Yes. But I, I, I think we're kind of of the same mindset.
And, and it's owned by the, uh, developer there.
Yeah, so that's one of the weird situations where the zoning does not follow the property lines at all. Um, the same group of people own a, a majority, if not all of those parcels, and it was all developed as one.
Could the city initiate a rezoning, uh, with a, well, and we're gonna get into this later, uh, with a, we have several zonings where we do like a C one restricted or an R, you know, R one A re- uh, restricted. Is there any way to do that only instead of a restricted, do a modified or an adjusted, where we would, you know, could rezone it to whatever, you know, the, uh, the, the apartments are up there? And then, uh, in that rezoning, make it clear that, that we have, are adjusting the zoning standards for that strip to not include the buffer, or, or make sure that that buffer obligation is, is taken care of.
So I think that would cause force issue, uh, by, because essentially what you're at, you would, you would almost have to approach it as if you were asking for a variance on behalf of the property. It's almost how you'd have, because you, you as a city don't want to waive your zoning apartments. So you would almost either have to create a new zoning district to meet those requirements of that revised zoning district, or I honestly don't know if there is a process by which the city could initiate something that you're thinking might ask. I think our thought would be leave it as it is if the property were ever redeveloped, understanding that it's kind of a goofy-looking thing on the back, but, um, if the property were ever redeveloped, let's clean it up then, but at this point, we don't think that it's worth the city for certain.
And it wouldn't fall under any like grandfather clause or anything like that?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Because the development as it was constructed meets the more restrictive of the two, so which is the R three district. The only thing, the only thing it technically doesn't meet, or wouldn't meet, is the buffer requirements, but it's because the buffer isn't on their own property kind of thing. Like the buffer's there, it's just it's not technically on the property. So it's, it fulfills all the requirements, it's a compliant lot as it's constructed today, it's just a real zone. And work, I guess, would be the best one.
So that wouldn't come into any sort of conflict, uh, uh, as we look at future land use, uh, any other apartment buildings or any other high-density, we don't have to worry about the same problem, we won't. This does not set a precedent that we have to then follow or anything like that? Okay.
No, because we are enforcing the R three district as it, it's just that there's this bizarre little buffer strip around.
Ready to move to the, the next one? Cause I think we're kind of thinking we won't do anything there, is that kind of our thought?
Right.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the next one is another, uh, oddball strip of U one zoning district. It's located in the rear yards of some privately-owned residents on the east side of Hill Press Drive. Um, we're unsure of, we're not positive of where that came from, but our thought would be is it may be, it may have been a similar situation to the previous one, where it's a buffer to shield the existing residential from the existing nursing home. Um. As it sits right now, the technically, there is at least one property that doesn't meet the zoning requirements because they have an accessory structure associated with a residential use in a U one district. Um, so that kind of, that kind of is what the difference is between the previous one and what we're talking about here. Um, our thought on this one would be the city initiate a rezoning to R one, um, and help clean up the compliance as well as the enforcement in this area. That's what all the, the adjacent lots are, they're R one, you would basically just bring, be bringing all of those parcels that are currently split between the two zonings into a single district. Cleans up enforcement, it would technically, if for some reason somebody had an accident in their garden shed, and it burned to the ground, they'd be able to reconstruct it as a U, uh, an accessory use of a residential structure where technically they shouldn't be able to do it today as the zoning is right now.
And if the city initiates that, that is, uh, fee-free for the landowners, they're, they don't pay any expense for that process.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct. There would be the typical two hundred and fifty-foot buffer notification to make sure everybody knows that it's happening, um, there, because the city would be, um, enacting it, there's no petition requirements, you don't have to have X amount or percentage of signatures. Uh, obviously, the city would make sure that all of the, uh, residents that are being impacted as well as the nearby ones understand that there's, really, it's just cleaning something up, it's making it easier to enforce, and honestly, it's making their lots less restricted by going from that U one district.
Making it what they probably think it is.
Correct. Correct.
Is there a buffer behind it then on the personal property?
Yes. Yes, the original nursing home, the buffer technically doesn't meet the current standards, um, but when it was constructed, it, it meets the buffer standards. Um, and if that property were to be redeveloped, which it sounds like there's a possibility of that, that there's going to be, uh, buffer improvements to make sure that they meet those requirements as well.
Seems good.
Okay, the next one is a little trapezoidal, um, piece of land, uh, just north of Northside Drive along west side of North Third Street. Um, this one, there is little to no information as to why it is zoned U one. Um, it is currently a single-family low-density home, um, and our thought would be, um, initiating a rezoning to bring this area into compliance, um, because currently, right now, you have enforcement issues, if something were to happen to the home, uh, they would likely have to initiate a zone to build it, that kind of thing. So this is a, another cleanup where the enforcement actually gets easier, it's less restricted, um, and we think it makes sense for the current use of the land today. That makes appropriate sense. Yeah. Okay. Now, more complex one. So along Waldo, and in that Waldo area, there are a number of residential lots that are currently zoned R two that are existing non-conforming. Um, they typically range, or their, their average size is about sixty feet by a hundred and eight feet, with an average area of sixty-five hundred, just over sixty-five hundred square feet. For reference, um, the existing R two district, or the R two district as it's prescribed, um, requires a minimum lot with sixty-five feet with at least eight thousand square feet of lot area. Um, we're requesting input from P and Z. We're requesting input from P&amp;Z regarding the zoning in this area. As of today, because of the way that they're constructed, the way they were platted, these lots can continue as non-conforming lots of record. It does not restrict the rebuilding of length of property on those parcels. It just restricts the amount of redevelopment possibility of those lots. There are a number of homes that the property owners own two adjacent lots, they're essentially using them as a single lot, but if something, if they wanted to try and sell one of those parcels off, definitely not. Another option that we would like to discuss is potentially creating a new zoning district that would meant lots to be a minimum of 55-foot wide and 6,535 square feet. That would bring all of these lots into conformance with that new zoning district. There would be little to no additional restrictions on those lots that are in the R2 district, we're just bringing those lots into conformance so that it's a little easier to deal with. A third alternative would be to reduce the minimum lot with an area in the R1A zoning district to manage these smaller lots. We would advise against that because then you have a lot of enforcement issues and a lot of other thing trickle-down effects for development using that district. And then a fourth option we'd like to discuss, it wasn't laid out in the memo, but is something that we could also do as well to help piggyback off of leaving them as non-conforming lots of record, is we could actually rewrite the definition of lots of record to allow for splitting along originally-platted lots. So as of right now, your lots of record, as long as they continue to function as paired lots, there's no problem. It's just when those lots are trying to be split to different uses that it becomes a problem. If you were to redefine your lots of record definition, you could then allow those lots to be split apart as long as it's on the originally-platted lots. So that would be a cleanup of the language of your definition section of city code.
Is that, would that have helped with the incident that just happened that went to Board of Adjustment?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so the, the Board of Adjustment decision that you're referencing was one of those lots where a single property owner owned two of the lots, one was being used as a home, one was being used as the accessory garage. The prop, the developer then bought both lots and then wanted to put a home on each lot. They're technically non-conforming, so he couldn't change the use of those non-conforming lots. By changing the definition of your lots of record, he could have built homes that fit the character of that neighborhood already without going to the Board of Adjustment.
And would that, fourth option, I guess, would that cause us any difficulty where else of the city?
I think we would have to do a little bit more digging just to be sure. But the amount of lots that were platted in this time period that don't, that are non-conforming in the city are very small. So the fact of the matter is, is most of the lots you have meet the zoning regulations that they're in.
Best solution in this case is fourth option, lots paid for.
Or making a home rezoning?
Yeah, I don't like that option. No. Possification. Like the fourth option the best. It just doesn't come up that often. I mean, it's probably the first time in I don't know how long I have this issue planning for various.
Yeah, we, we're not aware of any with this specific case, and it's just, it's because of the age of the lots. I, I think part of the reason we don't know why they're that small is I don't know that we have a copy of the city code anywhere. If there even was one at that point, because those lots were platted in the 50s. So.
So what was the, there was four options, but the one where you basically said this is its own zoning, what is that?
So you would, you would create another zoning district, call it R4, R4A, or I guess it'd be R5, yeah. It would, it actually, it would probably function very similarly to the CTS, where you know exactly where you're going to use that zoning district, you have no intention of using it anywhere else, and then you can kind of specify what it is that those, that zoning district is entitled to, restricted by that kind of thing. And we would probably, we would tailor it specifically to make sure that these lots are conforming, and then we would initiate the rezon, to rezon to that new district.
And no harm to those residents? You don't happen to live this one, do you? Okay.
But under that plan, would that be a rezoning and they would, everybody would get notified of a rezoning change? And whereas if we changed the definition of a parcel, that would really be done without anybody getting excited for the same benefit?
But you don't know what the unintended consequences of that are.
Right.
That's the other.
So we could also approach it that way, where if that's your preferred option, we can look into it and make sure that there's not be a snow effect where by changing lots of record definition, we're causing unintended consequences of something else.
And it would really be the same owner having two lots side by side? And it looked like in a couple of cases in this development, maybe owners have bought a lot and subdivided it, two owners have bought a lot together and subdivided it, it almost looks like?
So it's actually, I think, the exact opposite. I think it's one property owner buying multiple lots because they wanted a bigger home or a bigger garage.
Okay.
That wouldn't fit on the small lot that was platted.
There is one record I know of where there was a small lot that was purchased by the two adjacent property owners and split.
Okay.
Between A1 and 17.
And I'm not certain if there, well, the piece that's missing is typically when someone does that, there's a lot tie agreement.
Yeah.
That then permanently ties it to, right, because it's technically an unbilled lot.
Right.
Again, because of the timing of when it happened, there's not a record of the lot tie, but I'm guessing there was some sort of an agreement at some point?
But should we want to go, should we pick option four? And then the homeowners wanted to change their mind and re-subdivide those two half-lots into a single lot and sell it and develop it? They really should be able to do that under option four, I would think. And I, I don't see why they shouldn't be able to do that.
You'd, you'd be able to combine the two you had split back to a single lot?
Yeah, is what I think.
Yes, yes. But you could, but then you couldn't take three lots and split it into two if the, the two resulting lots were not conforming.
Right. That'd go back to the original.
Yeah.
Survey line.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
You referenced the specificity of doing a rezoning district, like CTS. So is there any risk for a developer coming in requesting R4A, whatever we call it? I think that was Olfest's maybe concern in creating another rezoning district.
Well, yeah, just that and then all the, the work that goes into that and notifying people who live in that area, just a lot more.
I think we would just need to be cognizant of what we're doing with our future land use plan and making it so that district is not confused as something that you can't use in the future. Because I, I've been working in the city since 2018 and nobody's ever asked us about CTS. So I think as long as you're careful and particular in the way that you construct your future land use plan, you can make it so that that is not applicable to the zoning district other than this location.
Just be that one, yeah. Rep.
Yeah. You're not looking for a motion on this at all? Just wanted to.
Yeah, discussion and I think we're getting some good feedback from you guys.
And on this last item, I guess, I'm, I'm still looking for the downside on the fourth option. And is, is, is there any, is, my question?
So we, we could proceed with the U1 rezonings. We could rediscuss this section of town at the upcoming meeting. We can get you some additional information, pull that one back from the council for a month and take it forth after you guys have some additional information.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Well, that brings us to the reports and particulars. I don't have anything? I don't have anything. Did you have anything you wanted to say? Sorry.
No, I'm just kind of gathering information right now.
Fair enough, fair enough. All right, so nothing else coming before the word, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All right.